Can you reach it?
Yeah, I can.
Just the one hour mat?
Oh, yeah.
Or does it not move that way? It has to stand close? It's America. Thank you.
Should've left it ahead and then had like one over there seven thirty five in there.
I would've been all stressed out, hungry. It was supper time. Just kidding. Sound good.
I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with the minutes from the last meeting. Is there any additions or changes? If not, we have a motion to accept.
There was, um, sorry, um, there was a, uh, point seen in the minutes where, um, there was discussion underneath my report as far as, um, the rate study and the safety assessment. Um, it should state something to the effect of the rate study has been finished on our end and the safety assessment is available to commissioners under closed door conditions, I guess, something to that effect. So, we, yeah, the office would request to make that change.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Those changes on the...
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Paul, second by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next item is the bills. Or a motion to accept the bills if musters any questions. And you can approve payroll at the same time if you so choose.
I don't think we want to approve both.
Is there a second?
I'll second him.
Moved by Jason, seconded by John. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. We have the commissioners' reports. We'll start with John tonight.
Um, I guess the biggest thing would be, uh, did send me a message yesterday, somebody had stacked a bunch of garbage on the curb and some bit on the street here up on, be Second Avenue Northwest. Uh, need to make sure that the residents know that you can't just stack garbage out there. Waste management's not gonna take it. Uh, they didn't take it today, I saw, so it's still sitting there. We can only stack garbage on the curb and the street there. I should say, not even on the street, but on the curb during cleanup week in May. Uh, as of tonight, when I came here, it was still sitting there. So, I don't know if, uh, we need to have somebody go out there and let the residents know that that garbage needs to be moved up to curb or taken care of in some other manner.
I think they moved out. We, I met with Casey this morning and there's a lot of preferder being sent out to the management.
Other than that, I mean, everything else.
Okay. Jason?
Uh, that's all that I had and then see the sheriff's here, so I'll let him address anything with the sheriff's office.
Nicole?
I have nothing.
Paul?
Uh, all I have is a, is a, if you had your packet, you should have two bits. One from TR Electric and one from B and B Transformers. The, uh, Roy wants to order two transformers. They're quite a few weeks out, so they're for spring's work. But he'd like to get those ordered, so he has them come spring. Uh, there was one for twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twelve, and the other one was nineteen thousand, nine fifty-one. And no preference, whichever way is it equal. Apples to apples, he said. The one shows that they can get it a little bit sooner, twenty-two to twenty-four word weeks versus forty-five weeks. So...
More than a few weeks.
He said?
I said, definitely more than a few weeks.
More than a few weeks, yeah. So...
Is he okay with waiting a minute?
Yeah, yep, this for spring's work. That's why he wants to get on it, so. But he want, this way we can get it under this, we can get on this ball's, like, from this year again, so. But I'm sure there'll be more that'll be needed next year, so. He's kinda trying to stay ahead of it, so.
It looks like even the one that's shorter turnaround is cheaper.
Exactly, yeah. It was easier that one.
Is that a motion to approve that one, Paul?
I'll make a motion to re- to re-approve the nineteen thousand, the one from TR.
Is there a second?
Nineteen thousand, nine fifty-one.
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Jason. Is there any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
And then, uh, just wanted, on economic development, you know, economic development gets a lot of, gets sales tax money that's mainly, you know, for, for working with businesses and stuff, and a lot of things that, that the HEDC does with that money is they do a lot of like flex pay loans, they call them. And, uh, so they've been giving out a lot of money to help buy down interest on a lot of businesses that are coming into town. So that money's being well spent to help, help businesses in town in any way we can, so. So if you, if you got a new business in town or you're looking at doing some work on your business, you'd be wise to check with economic development to see if they have any money that might fit what you're looking at doing, so.
How far are you willing to go out on those?
I think they've been going five years. JR could maybe clarify that, but five years is all we've done so far.
Okay, so, uh, Trail County EDC would most likely also participate if it was a...
Uh, they have been participating, participating on a lot of them, but the last one we just did, they didn't, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Anything else, Paul?
No, that's all.
And I have nothing for tonight. So go on to JR, do you have anything?
Just a gentleman.
Casey?
Um, the only thing that I would ask for your guys' approval on, um, the Knights of Columbus submitted a local permit for a calendar raffle. They seem to do it every single year, um, and they're switching from doing a, um, they used to have a site authorization and a rental agreement, um, and, excuse me, in order to have that, they have to do quarterly reporting, whereas this is a one-time event, because they only do events one time a year. Um, so they're switching it up and they would refer, rather have a local permit. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
If not, do we have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept.
Paul makes motion to accept. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Anything else?
Not for me. Well, thank you.
Steve, do you have anything from the sheriff's office tonight?
Like to, uh, introduce to you Jeremy Evers. Jeremy's our newest deputy, uh, came to us from Kinder. And, uh, happy to have him on board and, and look forward to having some good things from him, so. Just wanted to give an opportunity for you to meet him. Uh, the rest of you, I think, know Jake U or at least have seen him around, if not, so. All right. Any questions or anything we can answer for you there?
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right.
Don't be so excited. Family history or...
Were you planning discussion on the dog issue?
Sure, yes, we were. Uh, we can go into that now if you want.
If we can. I've got some other pressing business, so if we can jump into that, that would be good.
Yep. Do you have any updates as far as what you have found out?
Um, what I found out was that, uh, Humane Societies in Fargo are not open on Mondays. Apparently they're like a barber, they, they work on Saturdays, so they take Monday off, is what it appears to me. Um, but I had heard that somebody from the city might have been reaching out to them as well. I just wanted to double check and see if anybody had. Um, I don't wanna team up on them and keep, team them up over it, so I didn't know if you had something or if I should keep pursuing.
I, though, the big one that I went after, or that I called, was the pound in Fargo, right on Main Street, and I hadn't heard back from them, so.
And my experience has been it is more beneficial to walk in there and meet my ball by my ball. And sometimes it helps if I'm in uniform when I do it too. Um, so that's kind of the, the game plan or the thought process and, uh, thought I maybe had a good chance today, 'cause I'm in Fargo and dressed like I am, and, uh, then I find out they weren't there, so. I, I will find another day, get down there and see what I can find out. Uh, along the same lines, um, I have had some similar discussions with a lot of the other cities as well. I know everybody's kind of battling the same issues. And, uh, one of the thought processes is that, um, it might be time to host a meeting. Um, I don't know if we wanna bring all the city councils, maybe bring the mayor from each city into a meeting and have a sit-down and just kind of discuss things as a group between my office and the cities, the, the mayors. And then we can take that back to the pers- each respective city and discuss it on that level and we kind of come back together again and meet. Um, see if we can't come to some kind of a consensus on, on what would work too, because I can't speak for each of the cities. Um, you know, as far as what they're willing to do and what not willing to do and, and, you know, what would work for them. And maybe between all of us putting our heads together, we'll come up with some, uh, some answers we haven't thought of yet, so. Still just trying to, uh, come up with some solutions to, to what we're dealing with here. So, um, if that seems like a viable plan, uh, I'll look for an opportunity to, uh, to bring that group together and see if we can have a discussion and go from there. I know it applies to many things, not just, just the animal issues, but, uh, parking ordinances and, and ordinances in general, um, that we're dealing with. Because from my office's perspective, each city has their own set of ordinances and we're trying to keep them all straight and figure out who, you know, what order applies to, to which city, and it gets very confusing, to say the least. So, anything we can do that's gonna clarify and make things simpler is, is good for us, but I also know that there's a process, so. Um, we'll work through that, but I guess that's where I'm at right now. Stand for any questions, anybody else?
When do you think they could arrange something like that, a meeting? How long would that take to arrange or?
I don't think it'd take very long at all. Um, you know, talking half a dozen cities and we could use my office easy enough. Um, I guess the hard part would be finding a night that we could try to get everybody together. I would like to do it, yes, between now and Christmas, if we can find a night to make work, so. Um, I'll, uh, I'll send out an email to that group and, uh, just see if, uh, you know, shoot a couple dates out and see if that would work for the, the bulk of the group and we'll go from there.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see that happen sooner than later.
Absolutely. Like I said, before Christmas would be the, the best.
Yeah, the cities seem like they're willing to meet together with others. Obviously, it seems if it's gonna help solve the problem, I think it's best interest of all the cities to do it, in my opinion.
Absolutely. Well, like I said, everybody's got their own perspective, but, you know, it doesn't mean that it's unique to just them either. Maybe we can all benefit from it, so. We'll try and see what happens, so. I'll get that out to, uh, the mayors and then we'll go from there and then I'll leave it up to the mayors to brief each city. Or when I come back, I'll certainly fill in whatever gaps I can to.
And you'll maybe have something from the, just, was it, what did you say you went to?
Humane Societies.
You know, maybe you'll have something from them too.
What was the purpose of the Humane Society visit?
We're still trying to find someplace that's willing to take our animals.
'Cause they won't take them unless they go through the pound? So they have to go through the pound first, either West Fargo or Fargo first?
Correct. And, and when I say Humane Society, I guess that's what I'm referring to. I don't mean, I'm probably not using the right terms, but...
Okay, 'cause...
Because straightforward, all they have is Circle Friends, Humane Society.
Correct, correct.
That is the pound there.
Yes.
Um, or it's Fargo, it's Fargo. It doesn't make it a little bit different, but organizing or getting a contract with somebody there to take our animals is wonderful.
Okay, okay.
You have any connections there, Barb?
Well, I mean, I've been in the pound a zillion times, pulling animals out. I mean, you know, I personally agree with him that I think it has more clout walking in like that, um, than me walking in. I mean, I think they care about the animals. They will not humanize unless they are, um, a danger to the people. Um, or, you know, they're, they're very ill. So I, I think something needs to be done, yes.
And, and to be very clear, I, I fully anticipate that there's going to be a substantial fee attached to whatever contract we come up with. But the hoax being that that would get turned, get turned back to the pet owner to pay for that. And if they refuse to pay it, then, then the animal's forfeited and we move forward from there.
In that case, would the fee have to be paid to the pound Humane Society then? Is that kind of how it'd work?
Yep. Yep.
What if they, uh, don't pick it up?
That's, that's what I'm saying. That's where the, the animal would be forfeited to the pound and that's where the city would get stuck with a fee and, and so. I mean, there is some skin in the game for the city. There's no two ways about it.
Yeah.
But I don't see another way around it either.
How about the way they were talking about it one time, when they talking, if we held them for seventy-two hours and there was a place they could go, do you know anything about that Levi or?
Well, then, there, the, the shelters or the adoption agencies, whatever you wanna call them, they're more willing to take them because they don't wanna have to hold them during our, to see if the owner shows. So when we, if we held them, then after those seventy-two hours, or whatever, if we changed ordinance, however it stayed in our ordinance, then they could go to two Circle, or not Circle Friends, but, uh, Homeward Bound or any one of those, and generally then they're willing to take them because they can adopt them out.
Pound is essentially the holding place until you reach that seventy-two hours, if I'm correct, right, Steve?
That's the way I would understand it.
Well, and the problem is, is, is the rescues will not take them because they're not vaccinated. They don't know. And so they can't intermix the unvaccinated, so that's why they go through the pound. And that's how most rescues, uh, there isn't a rescue I know of that won't go through the pounds. So it's either West Fargo and then Fargo Pound.
In which if we had one, then we'd have to work with Dr. Walden or another vet to make sure that they're getting vaccinated.
Yep.
Simple answer, there are no simple answers.
Right.
It's a process and we're working on it.
I did work with JR a little bit too, to see how we could change our ordinance, and he made some tweaks. I hadn't had a chance to look at it again, but some of the things that I thought maybe we could change is, instead of requiring one of our tags, make sure that there's a tag of some identification on, but they still have to be licensed with the city. And make sure that we have a master list that we can give to the sheriff's department of, these are the dogs that we know of. If they're not on that list. Currently, we have it set up where they're, the license matches the rabies vaccine, so if you have a two-year vaccine or if you have a three-year vaccine, that's how long your license is good for. But we haven't been giving out chips or IDs, because we haven't had any for a while, so.
Is that available online, should you?
I believe so. It was on the, before. I don't know if it still is.
To pay for them online?
Not to pay for them online, but to register, the form is there.
Yeah, the form should be there.
Yep.
I guess my thought would be, I don't see any point in spending any legal fees while we're trying to figure it out in the short term. Right enough and trying to change an ordinance that might change again. 'Cause it's, it's gonna cost us lawyer fees, as he's tweaking stuff and it might, it might not stay that way.
It may not, no, but, um...
I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a big deal.
But there's two sides of this, of, we're not getting things that are registered, so we have to make sure that we're getting that done too. 'Cause that's part of the issue, is you guys don't have, when you find the dogs, you have no clue who they are, so.
Absolutely.
I think that's another big problem we have, is registering. We have to do something with that.
Right.
Either it's having a day to do it, you know, or town or something, here or someplace where they get them. Vet maybe comes and get them shots if they need them and it all will run at once and hopefully encourage more people, make sure they're licensed.
Is that under the, I mean, I, I have the app for the city, but is there anything under dog information under that city? Because if you were a newcomer coming into town, you wouldn't know these things.
I would think it would be on the website, not the app.
Yeah, it's under website and it's under...
I'm waiting for mine to load up.
You could put it in there. It's not in there, I don't think.
And it's under the permits and regi- license and form. And there's a picture of a dog and a cat right on it.
Once mine loads, I'll show ya. My internet's pretty slow.
So it's in the same spot where all of our other licenses are at.
'Cause I think too, my understanding is, Steve, well, ideally would be the easiest is if we can get the cities to mirror each other as much as possible. It's gonna make it that much easier for the sheriff's office.
Somebody's standing there, you look there.
Seven? Eight. I'm sorry, eight, I can't remember how we're at.
Okay.
Is there anything I can do? I mean, to reach out to anybody, or, I mean, I don't wanna step out of toes, but is there any research or anything I can do?
Biggest thing would be if you had a contact down there, but short of that, I don't, I don't know if anything we can do. I do have a contact in the Fargo Police Department that I plan to reach out to and, uh...
They have the animal control, you know?
Right, that's exactly what I'm talking about. So, you can start there and then, uh, like I said, try to, try and get that in. And I haven't given up on Circle Friends either, but I'm not holding back.
Okay.
Figured I'd send him a Christmas card too.
So as we stand now, you're just basically gonna reach out to the pound and then, and then to the cities and set up something?
Yep. Basically like we had before, a similar type contract, if, if the pound is willing to do it. That's what I wanna do. But that, that mayors meeting is where we would discuss what would be palatable for the cities. And then go from there, but, you know, we're not gonna have a separate contract with each city. It would be the same contract that everybody signed up on, and that's what we had before, the same contract.
So you heard what other counties are doing with their animals?
It's all over the map.
Yeah.
Anything else for Steve? If not, then I think we'll put it back on the agenda for January twenty-first. That way we get through the holidays. So that'd be the second meeting in January.
Can we, can we, tend to, we put it for the twenty-first and then if something comes up between now and then, then we'll, we'll discuss it.
Yep. Yep.
We'll just stay in touch with Casey and Jason and they can go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Steve, the other Steve.
He can be Big Steve, I'll be Big Steve. There's a couple of things. Uh, we got ahold of the, uh, the people about the grant for the, the school repairs. And, um, it looked promising that they'll extend, uh, extend the completion date on the grant. They have a few other ones that they're working on right now too, but it's gotta go through legislature in January. So we have to wait till January to find out if, um, it's getting extended, so we just gotta hold on to design until we find out from that. Second thing is, I brought the Stormwater Master Plan, gave everybody a copy of it. You can take that home and read it to somebody tonight, make a fall asleep. The only main takeaway I want is, uh, I sent a copy of this. This is inside the master plan, but this is also, um, a copy that is the, uh, stormwater standards. We'd like to adopt the stormwater standards so that I can have a handout, so whenever somebody comes to develop in town, you can just give them this handout and they'll know what the requirements are for stormwater improvements. I was talking to KLJ about the county's, um, parking lot, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and they're asking if there's any standard. I said, well, there's gonna be, but we haven't submitted it to the city yet, and I sent them a cut, a draft copy of this to, to look at and kind of have as an idea when they're doing their parking lot of the county. This basically just, um, goes through and it says, you know, the main thing is that the stormwater is all gonna be, uh, um, that the, the, the pre-development and actually the post-development. So they're not running off any more water than it's currently running off today. And I gave you a draft copy that I'd like you guys to adopt if you wanna, if you're gonna do it as an ordinance or you put it on the planning and zoning, um, requirements. But I suppose that would go through planning and zoning, the next planning and zoning, and then come back to your city council.
Yeah, definitely want to hear how them look at it.
I'll make sure that they look at it.
I guess it's going through planning and zoning. We don't really need a, uh, motion.
The biggest thing is to ask JR as if, would it be better as a standard, that we adopt the standard, or do we put it in the actual ordinance? Or a variation of, see the stormwater standards in the ordinance?
Sounds like it needs to be an ordinance to matter one, but it could be a reference to.
Okay.
I'd have to check ordinances to see if we have a standard even in place right now.
I don't think we do.
I don't think we do either, but... Yeah, we could adopt it as an ordinance, is what it looks like, or...
The requirements in here are pretty standard. They're, uh, similar to other ones we've set up for other communities. It's not the hundred and seventy-five pages that the Grant Four twenty is, and, um, we had a bunch of bill there, it was four pages, and we just kind of reduced it down to two pages, that's the bulk of it. Here's a couple extra copies you can pass around, planning and zoning.
Thank you.
And as you guys go through the stormwater requirement, or the stormwater master plan, you can just send me emails of, uh, any comments you have. We'll continue. It would just be a, um, evolving master plan as, uh, development happens, you guys require a plan or a storm bomb or something like that, so. Any questions for me?
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Yes, thanks.
Well, we'll go into old business. And we talked about dog discussions, so the cybersecurity grant and Tyler Tech scope change. Nicole and Jason, I think you guys.
So I had a meeting with Joe and Ben at the county. And they had brought up, they, they feel pretty confident that we would be able to change the scope on that and put all the money towards, from that grant currently to, towards the cost of the Tyler Tech. So my thought was if they were able to do that, that would, that they're trying to figure out what else to use it on. Some of the difficulty that would be a, help towards Tyler Tech, Tech costs.
Were they saying change the scope on the last one or both?
Both.
Okay, so that would be.
Thirty minutes.
So my only question on that is most of those grants, if you change the scope, you can't do anything with that funds until, or do anything with it until it's approved. So that means that we'd have to hold off on Tyler Tech before we could move forward.
Say that again?
Most grants won't let you move forward, which we've already kind of set up to start the first of the year with the process.
Tyler Tech.
With Tyler Tech. If we went through this, then we'd have to push it off again.
I would think they'd be able to change the scope whenever we think we're done with it in a couple of months and approval. And they said if they don't approve it, it's just, we can do another change of scope.
I, I think I understand what you're saying. So if we were to purchase computers and then change the scope of the computers, but we already ordered the computers, the grant doesn't necessarily go back and grab it. So I, I, yeah, I don't know how they would view, view that because we approved it, but we haven't purchased it, right?
But we signed the contract.
What, you signed a contract?
That says we're starting the first of the year.
Yeah, that might be a question for, for them then. If, if they will somehow pin, that's about forty-one thousand dollars that, from the last rounds that were approved for funding. And that's what the percentage is, but.
Great. Not against the idea, I just.
Yeah, I, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that part, so that might be.
I'm trying to follow up with Ben and let him know tomorrow if I.
Okay, yep. Okay, anything else on that?
I don't have anything else on that.
I don't, no.
Okay. Uh, the next item then is the snow sidewalk cleaning fees. We need to set those so that, um, if we need to clean any sidewalks, we have a fee set. We, let's see, do you remember what we set for mowing rates?
What?
Not offhand, I don't.
Was it fifty bucks? Can't remember if it was a hundred, the mowing rate.
I think it was a hundred for the first hour and then fifty for every half hour after. I, that's in my head, unless that's from Galesburg, I can't quite remember.
That seems about right.
Is, is this sidewalk cleaning thing a new thing?
No, we've always had in the ordinance. We've just never set the rate as to.
There's, um, the reason it came up is there's a business downtown that, um, didn't clean their sidewalk, um, and.
Last year or what?
Well, this year, on the first snowfall, um, and they said it was a nuisance in years prior. And, you know, I looked up your guys' ordinance and saw that you do have a sidewalk cleaning ordinance that states owners, both residential and commercial, are supposed to be cleaning their own sidewalks.
So the business that doesn't, have they been contacted before about this issue?
I couldn't tell you on that, not in my year here. But yeah, the, depending on what you guys said tonight, I'd like to send letters out to all the businesses and just let them know, and then put a notice in the paper as well.
And that's what we've sent before is letters, notice that in the past, and usually it's gotten taken care of and we haven't had to, but.
Yeah, so I think if they know it exists, they can probably ask somebody to, to clean it for them. But I know like, I just think of businesses like the cafe where they live, you know, in Halsted. And, you know, if they're, they can't get here and it's pretty bad, and twenty-four hours later, they, they have a sick kid or whatever. I don't want them getting hit up with a thief or something that's out of their control type of thing. But I think if people know about the ordinance or to keep them clean, then I think then some businesses would probably reach out and ask that somebody clean them for them.
But we just need to set the rate as to what we're gonna charge if we're gonna clean.
Has this been a problem in any other years?
It has in the past. We've had to do it once and I think we just let it go and we never charged. But we can't keep doing that.
See, um, the individual that complained about the one business, um, I, I did read off the ordinance and I said, well, in order to be able to enforce the ordinance, because they, they took it upon themselves to clean that portion of the sidewalk, you know, that wasn't their business. And I said, well, that's great that you do that, but if you continue doing that, then the city really can't take any action on it. So, um, they'll, they'll probably stop, you know, doing that nice service, I guess.
Is it a newer business or is it one that's been around?
It's been around. Yeah.
We've had newer businesses in the last couple of years that we just sent a letter and they started cleaning the sidewalks, so. But like Casey said, in order for us to enforce this, we need a price. So I would suggest that we do the same thing that we do for the mowing, which is a hundred bucks an hour, charge per half hour.
I guess we just give the neighbor everything and clean them. Or if it's, I mean, if it's a continual nuisance, then obviously they're well aware of it.
But it's the same thing with what we did with grass and other things, these nuisance's, we have, we have to have teeth in it, otherwise we can't. And this one, if they don't do it, don't pay for it, it can go on the property, correct, J R.?
Yep, especially assessed.
Has anybody gone up to them and explained it to them?
I have not yet, um.
Told them and said, hey, we got a complaint on that?
Well, the other, the other side to this is the business itself is not being in use. So there's no, yeah.
Call.
Nope. So yeah, and that's just this particular incident, you know, so.
Personally, I think they just don't care.
You think so?
I think so. You have business and you didn't shovel, you shovel your snow, right? You care. If you have a business downtown and you don't shovel the snow, you just, you know you gotta shovel it, it's your business. I'm not saying don't be nice and ask them, but the reality is, they're, they're, they don't want to do it. That's why, otherwise they'd be doing it. It's not that they don't know they don't have to shovel their snow, because it's pretty obvious, you know?
I mean, even if I wasn't in business but still had a building there, I would find a way for either it to get done or it myself, yeah.
And generally the guys will, if it's a bigger snowstorm, they'll try to swing in and get as much as they can off, but. So.
It just seems like there's always a stretch someplace where everybody's shoveled their snow and this person didn't, you know, so.
We, like, said, we need to have something in place, not saying that we're not gonna go and give, send letters and all of that, but we have to have something final in place, so. Does anybody like to make a motion to mirror the, the grass?
I guess I wouldn't go a hundred. That seems kind of extreme for shoveling snow, but I'd probably go fifty dollars, so.
We get charged eighty dollars an hour, so.
What's that?
I think we get charged eighty and a hundred dollars an hour for our snow removals.
It all depends if somebody's just using a shovel or if they're using a snow blower. I don't know if we can, I don't think, you need to set up two separate rates for that though.
If you want to go a hundred, that's fine.
You can say per half hour. I can't per say that it's gonna go much more than a half hour.
Right. Well, and, and like, it, it goes back to the front, like you said, if it has a little teeth, you can tell. You know, well, if you don't get your sidewalk cleaned, we're asking you nicely. But if you don't do it, this is what could happen. And if you, and if they say, well, you know, I'll let somebody else clean it for fifty bucks an hour, like you said, we're getting charged eighty bucks an hour, so they might look at that as a good deal.
Right.
So maybe that, maybe you do have to have it at a hundred because of that.
Is that a motion, Paul?
What if they don't pay? It goes on their property taxes.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, yeah.
Why do they don't care if it goes on their property taxes?
Well, eventually if they don't pay it, then it comes back to the city or the county will sell it.
Are we looking at doing this just for businesses or for residential too?
For the areas that are designated in our ordinance that need to keep their sidewalks clean.
Which are?
It's just the downtown area.
Downtown area and.
Street Calabria first down in northwest. But it's limited on the sides too. It's basically just the downtown area.
Business area, yeah.
It does extend to the.
Goes to the hospital and then to the bank. But it's very limited.
It's basically the area that they haul away already, so you're not filling up the boulevards, so. And I think a lot of people would do their sidewalks if they knew that it wasn't gonna get filled up by the snowblowers.
Well, I mean, really you think they would do it because they probably have customers that don't want to come in if they don't shovel their snow, but.
But then they could be closed too. They might not even have a business there. And I think that's what kind of happens some, is they're not open, so they don't really, they don't even go there, you know, so they don't care, so. Or just way if you have a little bit of a bite in them, at least you can kind of encourage them that, you know, maybe, maybe buy your neighbor lunch or something and they'll shovel your snow for you, or something, so.
So Paul made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by John. Is there any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Questions? I guess for me, is this just, uh, if somebody doesn't do it within twenty-four hours, they get a letter? Or is this a contin, like if it's a continual issue type of thing, a letter goes out?
I would look at it as a continual issue type of thing myself.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we're looking at an ordinance that way and fees that it's, you know, um, I just, I know with some businesses, it's hard for them to get there, you know, right away, but, or if they're on vacation. I don't, you know, I don't want to pelt someone for something like that, you know what I mean? Like, I'd rather reach out to them and.
Generally in the past, it's been, you have the twenty-four hours from the last of the snowfalls, what the ordinance says, and then when somebody makes a complaint about it, it takes a while in the office to filter through, so usually it's a day or two before we even.
So then the office has, like, usually you guys contact these people to let them know that.
Well, this is the first time we've dealt with the sidewalk issue. Yeah, I didn't deal with it last year because we didn't have the complaints last year. Um, it was such a nice winter too, we didn't have to worry about it.
But in years past, it's, letters were sent out and then they were given time, or called.
To me, it's just one more two in the two box, and if you, when you ask these people quietly, two, three, four times, after a while, it's like, you know, hey, you know, you can get charged.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If it's like a continual thing, rather versus like, well, this is my first time doing it, now I'm getting, you know, somebody to clean it, like a fine kind of thing versus.
Oh, I'm sorry, so who determines at what point they're gonna get fined?
Obviously.
Put that time in front of the commission.
Unless, unless Casey wanted to determine that, I don't think she wants to.
If it's black and white and I can take a picture, that's easy, you know, it's, that's one thing, I guess.
If you reached out to somebody and they never got it cleaned, and then you reached out again and at some point, you know, you know, when they're, you, you know that, you'll know who the ones that are having problems. You just have to drive around town, drive around, it's how, it's the same ones, in most cases.
That's something where I see, like, when it comes to the commission the first time, that it'd be from there on, if it's not clean, it's an automatic. I guess I'd be more okay with it if it's, if it's that, if it comes to the commission and then determine that, yep, this is a problem, I'm gonna be the, permanently addressed.
Well, the question on the table right now is whether, what we're setting the fee at. We can determine the other stuff on another motion if you so choose, but the question right now is the fee.
And this would come into play once we determine.
Once you determine.
Once you determine, at what point you're gonna send it out, so. That'd be similar to the beautification letters, I would assume, when we send them out.
Try wait for my vote.
All eyes are on you, Nicole.
I rolled my gut, no.
Jason?
Yes.
Any asks for me? Motion carries. I would suggest on notice at least twice, and then after that, if it still isn't done, then we go ahead and clean it. That's just my suggestion, so that whether it's two phone calls, whether it's, I prefer letters because then it's written and nobody can come back and ask questions about it. But if it's not done after that, then.
If there's somebody, whether it be us or somebody too, they can add that, you can ask them too personally, you know, along with the letter, but.
Right.
I always want that paper trail, it seems like.
Is everybody okay with that? Or do you have different thoughts?
I would like to see us try to reach out to them first.
That's what I'm saying, twice and then.
I, I want it to come in front of the commission to vote if it's gonna get, pose a fine.
Anybody else's thoughts?
I think that's fair. It allows them an opportunity to, I mean, if they have a reasoning.
That's after we've sent a letter to them? Yes, worrying them about that they need to.
One letter?
It's like two verbal notices, letter.
Well, say make a phone call it.
If you have a contact.
Yep, yep, if you have a contact, Bob's barber didn't follow their stone, call Bob and, hey, Bob, you didn't move your stone, are you, can you do, are you gonna do that? Whatever, yeah, I'll do it tomorrow. If it's not done tomorrow, well then, we're all just, and we got the paper trail.
Who's gonna be the one making that contact?
I mean, it could be public works, it could be the office. I don't think it's gonna be a ton of phone calls. I don't see this as being like a regular huge problem.
Hooked up would be to get a list of all the business owners. Get the contact list for this person.
They're already on the website. But I'd suggest, I'd probably suspect now those people that are on the website that are not cleaning their sidewalks. It's people that aren't in business anymore, or a vacant building probably, that aren't, that aren't regularly used as a business.
So I'd say if it doesn't get cleaned and it comes to us and we say, yep, start finding them, then from there on, you don't even have to have a meeting if it's not clean. You go clean it. We don't even get to do letters again after that.
What do you mean a abandoned business? What do you mean a abandoned business that still has a building owner, right?
But that process could take a month to get a sidewalk cleaned.
We have a meeting in two weeks. I think we just try it first, see if you have somebody to reach out, if we have issues with getting all the people, then we can address it the next meeting, if we have issues with it, so.
Alright.
Kind of a learning curve, maybe we got the fee in place now, so.
Yep. Next item then is the Renaissance Zone application for full-service foods.
Did you ever look up that, um, area that was in the block?
Full-service foods?
Mm-hmm. Is it in the, the area of the block?
Yep.
And then they've never, they didn't take one before?
I guess I didn't think to ask that.
Maybe ask Ricky if, because Amy did, um, well, you guys might have been on the commission at the time, when Amy did a remodel in Reno. I don't know if she had applied.
Ricky knows about it, we did send her questions, you know, from the applicant, so.
And she didn't, she didn't seem to have any.
No, I'm, I mean, she never said anything as far as somebody else applying prior. My computer's taking a little while.
Did they? Do they have a different name under that, or above that full-service foods?
Question I had is if the occupancy date of your project completion is one thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Is that an error?
Yeah, I saw that.
One twenty-one, twenty twenty-four?
One thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, yeah.
Should be twenty twenty-five.
They haven't started the construction, have they?
You can't start construction, can you?
That's why I asked, cause you can't start, can't swing the hammer for Renaissance. But also note that looking at their items, our Renaissance Zone program guidelines say it has to be basically improvements to the building, not including renovations, so. If it's something that you could remove from the property, it's not something that qualifies for exemption. The idea is to improve the building structure, so the roof, HVAC, all that's fine, but maybe notes coolers, which I don't know. How those coolers are designed, are they the actual built-in coolers, or are they?
Well, this is new construction, right?
They're adding on addition of the coolers and freezers.
Okay, so that sounds like a quality line then.
So either A, purchase to include new construction, or B, purchase with major improvements. And they didn't, they didn't select the problem type, it looks like.
Well, they have. They have it under rehab, seventy-five percent value.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's not, pretty sure, they have it, either work, it's the same as all the other.
So that's seventy-five percent or more of their true value, huh?
Correct, so you have to, you have to put that much money in there.
Thank you, Steve.
I'll actually go off assessed value, I think that one was too high, even when it goes off those slides, which is in here. Or if they, fifty percent more, you get the exemption.
Right, and that's, that's fifty percent or more of their true value.
Correct.
Should we hold off on approving and get these questions answered by Ricky? And make sure the application is completed correctly? So make sure the data occupancy is correct.
I would say it probably won't hurt.
And then the value, just clarifying that. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. The ARPA discussion and decision?
Um, I'll talk on that quick, John and I and Jay sat down together, um, one of the things, it won't pull up, I hope you guys can see it on your tablets. Um, one of the things that needs to be done in order to keep the ARPA funds that are in your guys' checking. Is to, um, have them dedicated by contract for a project in the future. Um, if we don't have them, um, dedicated by a contract. Um, the feds can take those dollars away if we don't have it contracted by the end of this month. Um, you can still do the work and spend the money in twenty-five or twenty-six, but we just have to have it documented. Um, the project that Jay would like, um, is a stretch from the school to the hospital. Um, the project would be, um, just over a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, which would work out great for the ARPA funds, the ARPA is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand and some odd dollars. Um, so I'm looking for a motion to approve that project and have a contract with Hubert Oy.
So, was the ARPA funds in with the? The other?
Municipal infrastructure.
Municipal infrastructure funds?
They were, and I had requested, um, a meeting or two ago to separate the two into separate funds.
And was that a second round of ARPA funds that came in, or did we just get one round of ARPA funds?
I think it was two, I'll double check.
Cause if it was one round of ARPA funds, we've already spent them.
Okay, um, tell you what, I'll double check on.
We spent them on, we used it for the water and sewer project, the.
I think it was right when Ashley was on her way out, is when they were.
Yep, so we, we spent it on. Our portion of what we had to pay for when we first started the USDA loan process.
So it goes with USDA, okay, I didn't see anything on the reporting for it, so.
Well, it may not have gotten reported, but, so I was gonna look to see. But I know that's what we used it for, cause.
I was gonna say, I remember that, I probably used it.
Okay.
I think it got one round or two, I thought we did, and it's gone one round, but.
Okay.
They kinda just dumped them in, right?
It, yeah, they.
Kinda mail the work.
Yep, a little, little bit like that, okay.
Thought, I thought so.
Well, then I will do some research later this week and find out for sure if you guys have spent those dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
If not, we can prove it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's definitely.
Yep, that'll be okay.
If we haven't, I think we should also maybe consider if we're looking at doing a, we're already eventually gonna get to doing a full road project. Maybe we shouldn't be spending that money on roads, and maybe you could put backwards title.
I'd have to look at what we can spend it on.
Just know, as long as you have, um, funds set up for it, from my understanding, cause we just looked at this with the county, as long as you have someone there set up for it, anything.
Okay.
I thought it was supposed to be for.
It's infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
And not, I don't think it's new, I don't know it's newer.
Yeah, for the, for the ones.
There were some, no, it couldn't be new, but it could be upgrades or replacement.
Yeah, each, I think each round they had, they changed.
Cause we wanted to use it for, cause I think they wanted to use it first for the development and that wouldn't work.
Then would it still be an upgrade to our software program? If that's the situation?
Well, I think there's so many rounds of that, and every time they changed the scope, which made it really difficult for some of the, some of the smaller communities to utilize them, because they. I think the fir- the very, very first one was infrastructure only, and then I think after that, it changed the scope again and again, so it'd be harder and harder to get the funds.
Right.
Or to utilize them, but it, it's been a while, cause I don't think they've been distributed now for a couple of years, at least a year or two.
Right. So we'll look into that, um, and the next item would be road closure for the Holiday Lights Parade. JR, I assume you know about that, is that your project?
I actually don't know all that, but.
Okay.
I think we wanna close some roads, um, very similar to last year, yeah.
I figured it was, uh.
I was trying to find the ARPA funds, that's what I'm.
HBA or, uh.
I am a past president, I wear that title with pride, but, uh, what's the round again, Paul?
Homecoming Parade.
I don't know why we're, I don't even, I don't know why we'd be closing anything, we never closed anything last year.
I don't think we did, I think it's just the general consensus of the city approval that we followed the same homecoming parade route then to Light Parade.
And I don't, and I haven't been contacted if there's a reason, they wanted them closed, I don't, I've never been.
Didn't we close this Main Street out here one year?
About one, years ago we did, when we did the games and stuff, but. But not since we've done.
This one goes down Caladonia still, right?
What's that?
This one will go still down Caladonia.
Same as the homecoming parade, it goes down Caladonia and turns right over here, then goes around that, comes back here. There's a lot of people, and then most of the floats park kind of on that side, and then all the parking is over here, so.
So, is that maybe what the street closure as far as prior to the parade, so people don't park here, so the parade floats can get through? But I, cause I, last year there wasn't excessive, I don't remember any vehicles being parked down here, just the parade floats that came through. So I would see what we do.
I can't speak for sure.
But maybe do that.
That'd be a better option.
I don't know where else they would close it, they wouldn't close anything else, so.
Tara from HBA requested it, so.
Okay, maybe she was thinking to. Keep vehicles out prior to the parade, but I don't.
Is it, is it possible for the reindeer?
Oh, I forgot about the reindeer, that could possibly be it.
Yeah.
He knows everything.
But they're, they're up in railroad park, aren't they, so.
But maybe that's what you wanna close.
Is that maybe why they wanna block it, so you don't drive through here and scare the reindeer, maybe?
Maybe.
I forgot about reindeer, huh?
If they scare them, they'll take off in five, much like that.
Do we have a motion to approve the road closure? Do we have a motion to approv- approve the road closure?
I'll make a motion that if need, if, if they, if we need to close the road here from, from Caladonia on Main Street South, this first block down the First Street.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we need to close anything that I'm aware of on other parts of it, so.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded by Paul and seconded by Nicole, any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Um, so we did look, there was two, actually three funds, three ARPA funds that were given out. We got one in twenty-one is the one that we did spend for sure, and then there was eight hundred ninety-three fifty-two in March of twenty-two, and then in. July of twenty-two, we got the hundred and twenty-eight thousand three eighty-four. So we have to dedicate or say that we spent those funds.
Which we could, since that's the case, we could say that we spent it on the projects from this summer to that Hubert Oy helped with. If you guys wanted to go that route, so, and just make it right in our books, we could do that.
And then we don't have to worry about paperwork down the road.
Is there a deadline for that one fund, maybe, like, do they give up three days or more?
So you have to have all of your ARPA funds dedicated, if you haven't spent them, yep, you have to have them dedicated by the thirty-first of this. Yep, you can spend them in twenty-five and twenty-six, but. Nope, that's okay, yeah, it's, it's a lot. But yeah, as of right now, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand and whatever, three hundred and sixty-four dollars has not been technically dedicated, so if you guys would like to dedicate that to a project from Hubert Oy this year, fine. Or we can, over three hundred thousand.
I mean, does, does it make it easier, to me, it makes sense to do it, but.
It doesn't save us any money.
Right.
Well, it, either, either way, you know, we'll make it work.
It makes it easier, so we don't have to do this again in a year, or two years, or three years.
Right.
Yep, on my future, cause I'll have to report through twenty-seven, and just the reports going forward will just be zero dollar reports, so. After, after this April one.
This said cities have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to enter a contract on spending the funds, and they have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six to spend the funds.
Right.
Right.
So she dedicates all the funds spent in twenty twenty-five, so.
Exactly.
And we're good.
So how would you guys like to move forward?
Would we have to dedicate the hundred and twenty?
Yes.
Have the funds for that section though, or did we pay for, I thought we used some.
Prairie dog money.
We used prairie dog money, which would.
I was gonna wear it in here.
And the prairie dog funds were, um. They, prior to Casey being here, the prairie dogs and the ARPA were in one account, and then they got split out, so.
Yep, just makes it easier for me to report if they are split out, cause it's two different reporting sites.
So all you would have to do is just do a transfer from ARPA into, um.
Well, they're, they were within municipal, so you need to pull them out of municipal, right, pull them over to.
Municipal infrastructure, or?
The ARPA funds were within municipal?
They were, um.
Okay, but you've already pulled them.
Yep, per one of your guys', when, when I asked you guys to do transfers earlier this year, I split it out, so, just kinda knowing the reporting requirements.
So then this would be, what you do, if you can either dedicate it with the bid. Or we can try to get another bid for something else, or we can. Do a transfer of the, whatever funds are in there, into the municipal infrastructure fund, saying that we're using, we use that to pay for the. The road project out here.
Need a motion?
We do need a motion, yeah.
I'll make a motion to use it for the project that we have already did.
Is there a second?
Seconded that.
Moved by Jason, seconded by Nicole, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Um, and then.
You'll just transfer that then, what you're doing.
Correct.
Last.
Follows all the guidelines.
Yeah, cause it's dedicated.
We're dedicated. We either had to dedicate or just spend the funds, we just spent the funds. Alright, the last item on new business is the resides by sales tax ordinance, which JR had a couple changes for the state, so he can clarify that if needed.
I kinda sent him the email too, just as a summary, uh, the state kindly informed me that we were, I was using outdated language. Because they changed how they tax alcohol and your farm equipment, and to use special wording, the state approves, which is all that was changed, I took it from their model ordinance. So it's just making sure that we're taxing new farm equipment and alcohol like we thought we were. So this is all that's been was changing it for this current Hillsborough Fire Ordinance, as well as the prior HEDC ordinance, just bring it up to snuff.
And do we have to read twice again?
Well, I have to read it twice, I already built in, if you meet your approval for this meeting and next, and then after the next meeting, we'll still make the same cut-off for implementing the new ordinance, so it's the first meeting.
I have a motion.
Actually, I have a question on the first.
Go for it.
Sorry, I just have a question on the page two, um, at the top. Um, it says, all funds generated from these taxes shall be transferred, uh, Hillsborough Fire shall provide an annual report to Hillsborough City Commission of where the dollars have been spent, does it matter a date on that? For an annual report?
Doesn't matter a date, but that's not a change to this ordinance, that's what's, that's currently what's in effect.
Okay.
So I, it shouldn't have been a red line, probably, oh, maybe you don't see the red lines.
Uh, no.
Okay, sorry, I, I said it as a red line, but I guess maybe I didn't PDF it as a red line, so. The only changes to the actual ordinance are definitions, I added a bunch of central code references.
I remember seeing the, like, the, the alcohol and the, like, the tobacco and the lodge.
Yep, there's two, there's, I changed the references to the state statutes as they required, and, if I may borrow this. And added eighteen point oh three oh four, goes for super alcoholic beverages and farm machinery and irrigation equipment. And added 18.0304, goes for certain alcoholic beverages and farm machinery and irrigation equipment. That's the only changes. Everything else was just statutory code references, but that's the new section, that's the only piece that matters.
Okay.
As to your question there, it's whatever they reported in the year, it's the same requirements we have for HEDC, where now it's supposed to make an annual report of where its sales tax spots as well.
Okay, and then the last one is, uh, "At any time that Hillsborough Fire is no longer in operation, the funds otherwise meant to be paid shall be placed in special funds in the city official budget to be used for the same purposes." Are those same purposes repairs, expansion, purchase, and other expenses?
I would forget them, or so is the item here is...
Because if they're no longer in operation...
Operations, the cost of Hillsborough Fire, so basically our fire department, because the city would still have a fire department, it just might not be run through Hillsborough Fire.
Oh, that's a separate thing.
There's a separate non-provisionalization crap to set up, so they can get the grants.
I did not know that.
Yep.
Alright, that's, that's all, I'm good.
Sorry, I'll send the red line, I, I thought I had, but it's been a week.
No, I think you did, I just...
Well, if I didn't send it as a PDF, then if you open it as a Word, which you know is how I sent it, it will automatically accept all changes.
Probably should slap his hand.
Oh, wait, wait, I think I might have to get a hand to that. I haven't opened and I do not see red, so.
I don't, I don't remember seeing that.
I just opened PDF, there's a red line.
Yep.
I did send it wrong, well, I expect you to compare it to the old one and go hunt and find, so.
That's alright, I...
Do I have a motion for the, adopt the first reading of these two ordinances?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Jason, seconded by Paul, is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Do we have any citizens that would like to address the commission tonight? Just a reminder that, uh, city hall is closed on the 24th and 25th, or noon on the 24th and then all day on the 25th, and the same on New Year's Eve, uh, New Year's Day. Is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.